If we do not take preventative action now, if we continue business as usual, that the temperature on the planet could rise upwards of nine degrees by 2100. It also said that the sea, the ocean could rise by upwards of 10 feet. What does that mean for us? Well, it means for us that if we continue with that temperature rise, Greenland is not that problem. It's 1,000 miles long, it's 300 miles wide, and it's got a cake of ice on top of it. 10 to 20 Empire State Building time. Now, you take that ice cube and you put it into a full glass of water already. Then you're looking at catastrophic damage to Massachusetts, to the entire east coast of our country. That's just us. Off our shore is the second fastest warming body of water on the planet after the Arctic. On the planet, the Kha'adid, cold water, they have to head north. It's changing our state, it's changing who we are. So we lay that out first in the Green New Deal. Number two, we then call for aggressive historic action to put in place the preventative measures. As Catherine said, my wife is a public health doctor, and the bottom line is there are no emergency rooms in plants. So you have to engage in prevention. So what we call for is a massive deployment of the technologies that can help us to avoid the worst, most catastrophic effects. What does that mean? Well, it means, just for a few examples, what we've seen over the last hundred years is tax breaks for the oil industry, oil depletion allowance, natural gas companies, coal companies, nuclear companies for the last 70 years. Then, when we turn around and we say, "We want permanent tax breaks for wind and solar and all electric vehicles, and for all electric buildings, and for new storage and battery technologies," they point at us and they say, "Oh, socialism." And you know what we say? "Give us the socialism you've had for the fossil fuel industry for the last 100 years, and we will bury you in the marketplace with the deployment of these technologies." I am the house author of the Fuel Economy Standards Law that passed in 2007 that President Obama used along with the California Way, but it increased fuel economy standards to 54.5 miles per gallon. That's what Elon Musk, the ability to go from the Capitol migrants and say, "Look how high the goal is for our country. We're going to have to invent new technologies." Now Donald Trump is saying he wants to roll it back to only 38 miles per gallon by 2021 and then never increase it again. Well, that leads to dramatic increases not only greenhouse gases, but in importation of oil. So my old feeling, when people say, "What's the Green New Deal about?" It's about 54 miles per gallon, and 64 miles per gallon, and 74 miles per gallon, and 84 miles per gallon. We put 70% of the oil that we consume into gasoline tanks. We have an ability to invent our way, invent our way to the future. Introduce the bill with Chris Van Collin to create a climate bank, which would be a way which, the city of Framingham? City in Framingham sounds funny. The city of Framingham. And to be able to say to private sector companies, "You can get low interest loans in order to insulate your buildings to the highest possible standards, and you can repay it over a long period of time." And that $35 billion could actually leverage upwards of $750 million worth of investment to begin the process of making these buildings so much more efficient. Catherine made reference to it, but I'm the author of the 1987 law for appliance efficiency, which ultimately led to multiple rule makings on, for example, air conditioning. Air conditioning is something that determines largely in many parts of the country how much electricity has to be generated, how many coal burning plants you need. Well, my law back then avoided the need for scores of coal burning plants because we just made it more efficient. My mother used to say to me, "Henny," when she was disappointed in me growing up, she would say, "Henny, you have to learn how to work smarter and not harder. Your father and I are going to donate your brain to Harvard Medical School that's completely a huge human organ." Well, that's what energy efficiency is, you know? Insulate buildings, we get more efficient appliances. We reduce dramatically in auto electricity, which we need. And you can go on to manufacturing, you can go on to other sectors. We can do this. We know how to do this. We're Americans. That is our strength. You know, back in the 1990s, I passed three bills. One moved over 200 megahertz to create the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh cellphone license. And it was, for people who remember back then, it was like Goodyear Gecko had a phone that looked like it was a brick. But by 1996, you had a flip phone in your pocket. And that flip phone was under $10 cents a minute, and it created Darwinian paranoia inducing competition in the marketplace. And then 10 years later, another young person came along and created a phone that you all have on your possession right now, an iPhone. And I know that because I can see many of you looking down right now, not even paying attention. I'm very proud of that. I hope that we can reach a day where no one ever looks down again. No one ever looks down at the stars. Everything ever gone, just people came and went. Well, not one home ever arrived in America in February 1996, when I was able to pass the bill to make no more qualifications. By 2000, we had a doctoral law, but that meant a lot of data deployment in a hundred and ten. So we can do this, we know how to do this. It's going to be awesome. And it is imperative that we do it. We can save all the creation by engaging in massive job creation. Millions of new jobs created in the same way we did in the broadband revolution. Same thing. And we'll take anywhere near where the climate, where the denier achievement in the Oval Office believes that we'll get. So for me, I know we can do it. It's genetically hardwired as a people to be able to do it. And by the way, in Africa right now, there's 500 million people walking around with a wireless device in their pocket, revolutionizing their countries and their economies because we invented it and lowered the cost and made it available to them. The same thing will be true for wind and solar and all electric vehicles and batteries and all electric buildings, which we will be the leader. And then ultimately, that will reduce the temperature of the planet. But you cannot preach Timlins from our school. You cannot have a president who is a climate denier. You cannot have a president who doesn't even understand that Mar-a-Lago is going to turn into Mar-a-Lagoon over the next 15 years. So we have to wage this battle. And we can do it, and we can deploy these technologies. And third, what we did in the bill was to do something which President Trump thinks is quite contribution. What we did was, we drafted the third part with the talk about who is going to be a meditator of this new deal. And mindful of how many people got left behind in the first new deal, which were a lot of people, who just didn't happen to be in the right color or the right area. So we wanted to say very explicitly, intersectionality, minorities, people who do not have income, you know, the people of Framingham. I'm going to mention that. Now, what do we use as I document? I'll tell you what we use as I document. We went back and we looked at Franklin Delano Roosevelt's 1924 State of the Union address where he laid out a second Bill of Rights for all Americans, the battles who are going to be returning a year later on fighting World War II. And in his economic Bill of Rights, Second Bill of Rights, he laid out what every American is entitled to. Everyone's entitled to a job, everyone's entitled to a good education, everyone's entitled to healthcare, everyone's entitled to know what's a small business person that went up, they just can't wipe you off. And we put that in as section number three. And Donald Trump and the Pope brother said, "Socialism." And what we say is, the second New Deal, Franklin Delano Roosevelt had the right idea. That should be something that every single American is entitled to aspire to far there. And we want that as the core of this bill, that no one gets left behind. So we put it under Pope. We found that it's a great, a beautiful, a country of excellence. It's there too, but let's keep it here. And we thank all of you for being here tonight. And again, partnering with Catherine every day is a special, you know, treat, a privilege for me. And now, if you want, we will take questions from the audience. And Rory and Nolan will be at the microphones, and we would love to hear them. By the way, if there are young people here, you can cut right to the front of the line. Anyone here, Sunrise Movement, Framing Hill State, cut to the front of the line. No questions asked, and we want to hear about you. Let's go over here, Rory. Oh, just wait one second. Yeah, we're just going, everyone's know who you are and where you're from.
Uh, yes, my name's Tom Boland, I'm from Southborough. And I actually am here representing the Sunrise Movement. And my question is, my representative Clark, would you be willing to join Senator Markey in signing the No Fossil Fuel Money Pledge? I have it right here, I would like you to sign with.
Okay, so I do not take fossil fuel money, but I'd be happy to look at the official pledge as well. Well, I'd like to read it.
And may I say this, on behalf of Catherine, the chances of anyone on the fossil fuel industry giving her any money is precisely zero. Let's wait one.
I didn't leave money on the table.
Yeah, so we should, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well.
So are you going to sign or might I read it right now?
Now, bring it and take it, thank you.
Nolan, Nolan.
Hello, Senator Congresswoman Clark. I'd like to ask, we support the Green New Deal, and we've been collecting signatures from the grassroots here in Framingham. Do you support it? And we have copies of those signatures or those petitions from both you and the congressperson. But what I'd like to know is if the administration manages to pass the US-Mexico-Canada agreement, what does that do to the New Deal? Has that been discussed?
Catherine, I will tell you, we are not going to support any trade agreement that does not have the strongest possible environmental standards that is included. We are going to make sure that other countries can't pollute as a way of making their products cheaper. And so if we build it actually into the Green New Deal, we talk about trade agreements having the strongest possible environmental protection. So it's something that we explicitly mention because we don't want our workers losing their jobs because other countries pollute in order to make products that can defeat people in that direction.
Can I just add to that about the trade? That one of the issues that is really critical and important, thank you, to make sure is that not only do we have good language in there about environmental protections, but that we have truly valid enforcement provisions. Because it was something that was promised in NAFTA, but never came to materialize. So we can write all the good things into trade agreements that we want, but if we don't have the levers to enforce it, it won't mean anything. So that is an ongoing discussion that we will be pushing for to get a yes vote on any trade agreement from the board.
Hi, I'm Jan Jones, I'm from Maynard. Bear with me, I'm going to get to the question. Thank you for proposing the Green New Deal and for working with the Sunrise Movement. Many of us agree that in order to fulfill its goals, control of fossil fuel companies over our government must be broken. And in order to do that, certain Supreme Court rulings, including Citizens United, must be reversed, and the only way to do that is via a constitutional amendment. In the Senate, one amendment has been proposed, but it is too weak to be effective. Will you, so my question is, will you file and lead the charge for the We the People Amendment, which has been filed in the House as HJRES 48, and it has been co-sponsored by Catherine Clark and seven of the eight representatives from Massachusetts? Will you file and support this amendment?
Well, I support the strongest possible provision to overturn Citizens United, the strongest possible, with the exception of the Dred Scott decision and a couple of others. It's probably the worst decision in the history of the United States in the last four years in the course of the United States House and Senate. So I haven't looked at it, but if what you're saying is accurate, then there's a high probability that I will be doing that. Because there is no more invidious threat to democracy in our country than Citizens United. And by the way, that's why Donald Trump cannot be re-elected because there could be two Supreme Court justices that are maybe on him or on the court.
Hi, we have a question here.
Beautiful. Yes, could you move the microphone a little closer? And introduce.
I have Anya. She's Anya, and we had a question. Anya's going to be there at Denning Elementary here in Framingham. And we're also a part of Girl Scout Troop 69236. And what she wanted to know was, what can her and her troop do this year to help find a change and bring things back into control? Is there a certain project that they've been involved with? Either with the town, the city, I should say, the state, or even your organization?
Well, thank you, Anya, for being here and for being a Girl Scout. I'm a Girl Scout, I am now a member of the Capitol Hill Girl Scout honorary troop. And like one of many of those, I'm sure many of the senators and representatives behind you are. You're already on the rural road to being a community leader and to looking to how you can help. We are so lucky to have so many state representatives and senators and Mayor Spicer here. There are endless things that you can do on the local level. And we really are, this whole movement around saving the planet and climate change starts with you. And we're so grateful that you're here. And whatever given your troop decide to do, whether it's an education project or cleaning up a trail locally, or helping with some sort of recycling. Mayor Spicer's making a list, I can see right now, activities that you can do. But that's how we start, and this is about you. This is about the future of this planet because we want your future and your opportunities to be endless and to be what they should be. So thank you for being here, you're our inspiration.
And my name, my wife is Brownlee, but a few years ago, she actually worked with the Girl Scouts, the Grid Badge, while working on breast cancer. What was that? So maybe that could be a project for you, to have a Girl Scout badge, for girls not just in Framingham, but all across the country, that they can earn, and they can win with their own efforts. And again, as Catherine was saying, here in Framingham, as good as they are, and they're at the top of the list, this won't work too good to ensure that in every single area where our environment is being polluted, that people take leadership. And your generation is the one that's going to ultimately be harmed the most. You'll be there and alive in 2100, when the temperatures have risen at 9 degrees Fahrenheit. So every project that you put together is going to make a big difference and then be a model for the rest of the country. We're not just a base state, we're the brain state. In your brain, working with your friends could make a huge difference. It's just great to be there. Thank you so much, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lan Yamas. I'm an environmental major and originally from Framingham. I took environmental studies here, that's what got me so interested. And my question is, I'm so excited about the Green New Deal, I think it's an amazing program, or deal. But how would, in the future, when the Green New Deal passes and grows, how would we work with the UN and on working on passing sanctions and other legislation to help countries move away from oil industries and the damaging of their natural resources?
That's an excellent question. Donald Trump has withdrawn us from the Paris Climate Agreement, which John Kerry and President Obama in Ernie Moniz, Massachusetts, negotiated. Now, we're not finally out of the Paris Agreement because you have to give three years' notice. And so we're not completely withdrawn until November of 2020. And I think there's something else going on at that point. There's just one more reason why we have to defeat Donald Trump. You know, if he wins, it's like a death sentence for the planet. For eight years, we're not leading and other countries in the world, even here in China, think that he got away without doing what they can do as well. Inside of the Waxville Marquee Bill, which we passed in 2009, it's 10 years ago, on the House floor, 219 to 212, it was defeated in the Senate. President Obama said it would be one of the top three of those he would sign because he put climate at the top of his agenda. What we did was we built into that legislation billions of dollars per year to help other countries to move to a more as rich as we are. So that they too could participate in this green revolution, this technology revolution. We actually put in millions of dollars to encourage Brazil not to tear down the emerald. Those are the lungs of the planet. We have a new president down in Brazil who is acting in a highly immoral way, actually, and just walking away from the entire Brazilian history of dedication to conservation. So you are right, it's not enough for us to do it here. We then have to create mechanisms by which we help other countries in the world to be able to deploy these technologies, engage in conservation practices within their own country.
I just wanted to add that thank you for talking about the global leadership aspect of this. And I think that is something that, under this administration and under the leadership of the Republican leadership in the Senate, we're struggling with. And we have such a role to play. And it not only is good for the planet, good to help other countries use alternative and renewable energy sources, but it's going to be good for our economy if we're the leaders in the innovation and we can help sell this energy that is going to be planet-saving and great for creating good jobs here in the United States. So thank you for reminding us about how important this work is around the globe, and we have to be a team. And so it is so important that we get back into the Paris Court, get back into a functioning State Department, and be able to be at the UN, to be able to promote this, and really highlight the words of the United States, and need that leader on these issues. Thank you, and thank you for your major and your interest.
Good evening. Okay, so I'm sorry. My name is Jordan Bryan, and I represent Framingham here, I live here. Two things that I didn't hear highlighted in your speech regarding the climate change that I think are huge factors that contribute to it, both our consumption of beef, like red meat specifically, and also transit. I mean, and anyone that lives in Boston knows our transit system is extremely old and decrepit. And we need like Amtrak, we don't have trains, we don't have high-speed rail, that. So what are you working on in those areas to be able to kind of really combat all facets of climate change? I mean, yeah, car emissions are nice, but they're, you know, it was the only thing.
So our goal is to actually help to overhaul agricultural processes so that they're more sustainable, that they don't contribute as much as they do today to greenhouse gases, and to actually create incentives for farmers to move their practices. In a lot of ways, farmers are the original conservationists. And if we create the incentives for them to change their practices as we produce beef or other products in our country that contribute disproportionately to greenhouse gases, we can make a difference. Now, can I recommend to anyone who is here, try an Impossible Burger? It's unbelievable. How many of you have dropped an Impossible Burger? Look at this, how good is it? It's great, yeah. So there's technology out there right now that is going to, I think, in a way, provide a competition for the traditional agriculture industry to move in that direction.
And I know that part of what we're working on in the House, and I know that the senators as well, is a robust infrastructure bill. That of course, we all know, we need roads, we need bridges repaired. But we also need to be looking at public transportation. And how do we, how do we, how do we establish rural broadband? How do we make sure that we are upgrading our electrical grid? All of this is part of an infrastructure plan that I would, the oil industry, come to. And also at the same time, we can create great jobs and thriving economies while we are rebuilding and re-greening America. So that public transportation is so critical to how we get there and how we combat this.
And I will say that we just passed a Surface Transportation Bill out of the Senate Public Risk Committee on which I served. And I worked with others very hard to build in a climate change section of the bill. Kind of shocking in 2019 in a Republican-controlled Senate. But we worked very hard to do that, and now I serve on the other committee in the Senate, the Congress Committee, to which that bill is going. So it's important for us to understand, you know, that the transportation sector plays a big role. And let's be honest, brown people and black people have been much more close to pollution than white people in the suburbs while they're in higher vision. So in the end, when all the factories are antiquated, it does ultimately affect the lives, the health of those who live closest to it. In too many instances across our country, those are the ones that are helped. So you agree with me on this, and thanks anyways.
Hi, I'm Barry Rosenberg, I'm from Westford, Massachusetts. I am also a member of We the People. And I'm glad to also support control. And I'm glad to acknowledge NRA's rip. And I would like to point out, NRA lobbying is something that will also be impacted by the We the People Amendment. And was wondering if we would be able to... the We the People Amendment, and was wondering if we would be able to arrange a meeting between We the People in Massachusetts and yourself, if we could arrange it by, could better help give you the information implications of the amendment.
Done, and Rory's going to be the person, and the soonest we can do it tonight, Rory and you will have a meeting, and then we will have a meeting subsequent to that. And I just want to add this paragraph, because of Climate Control, back in 1994, the Chinese semi-automatic assault weapons, at ninety bucks a piece, were the ones that were the most frequently used in these incidents of ass marriage in our country. And I was successful in organizing the effort in 1994 to have President Clinton put a permanent ban on the importation of a million semi-automatic assault weapons at ninety bucks a piece into our country. That's now kept out about twenty million assault weapons out of our country. Now, and I'm proud of that. But inside of the 1994 law, we had a ban on domestically-produced assault weapons, and that expired after ten years. So that's what Congressman Clark and I want to do. We want to go to the House and Senate floor and have the votes on these issues, and put it on their desk, and I'd be willing to look at We the People's proposal to see how I can work with you to advance that. So thank you so much for being here.
Hi, my name is Ayesha Mara, and I'm from Wayland.
Can we just speak here just a little?
So I'm from Wayland, and climate change is a really important issue to me, and I think legislation like this is what we need. But I think we need to acknowledge that it has its consequences as well. The Green New Deal calls for immediate decarbonization, but that means no more auto-lit disroofs, no more coal disroofs, no more oil disroofs. So the workers for those industries will lose their jobs, they could lose their healthcare, they could lose their homes. So how will you help these people after this location?
So that is a very good question. And what I did in 2009, and again, the Waxman Markey Bill, the strip gas house, is, one, we built in two hundred billion dollars for carbon capture and sequestration, so we could remove the carbon from traditional sources of energy. You know who opposed it? PBD coal, Alka-Cola, Arch Coal, they wanted to kill them. They wish they could have that back today. But we also built in a very significant program for anyone who didn't lose their job. It included three years of full pay, three years of full healthcare, it included job training program. And again, it was the coal industry, they killed them. Now, they've gone from eighty thousand coal miners in 2009, now they're now to fifty thousand coal miners, those miners didn't get anything. And that's without the Waxman Markey Bill passing. So we're not insensitive to this issue. My father was a local union president, electrician. So I'm very sensitive to these people and their jobs. So it has to be not just, it's not just a transition, and it also has to be a just transition. But we should also know this, we're now to fifty thousand more coal miners, we now have three hundred and fifty thousand people in the wind installing industry. Who are they? Roofers, electricians, steelworkers. And if the bottom of the tier under Donald Trump hadn't just killed our Vinian Wind Project, would have three hundred thousand people off our coastline installing that new equipment. And so, I agree with you, we have to take care of these essential workers, we have to be very sensitive to their dangers. But at the same time, there is an unlimited job creation opportunity in the green economy that will create millions of new jobs, high-paying jobs, that will help. But you're so right to raise that issue, and believe it, it's in my soul that they get everything they deserve, because in many ways, their companies, when they're taking their pensions, want to take away their benefits. These are Democrats, I'm sure, that get everything they deserve.
Hi, my name is Isabel Patrani, I'm from Framingham. So recently, unfortunately, the past week, the administration has chosen to roll back Endangered Species Act provisions. And we already know that they have been trying to limit the extension of our natural resources that include our wildlife preserves, our wilderness areas, things that make America, us as this great wilderness and such a diverse place for wildlife. So how do you plan in the Green New Deal to address both of those issues, both in protecting the Endangered Species Act and straighten it, as well as protecting our areas that we find important in our natural resources?
So I can tell you about the work we are doing to combat this. And you are so right about what is happening with this administration, not just with the Endangered Species Act, but with so many on the regulatory level, on the administrative level, rolling back environmental protections, rolling back wilderness area protections, loosening up the ability to mine on public lands, all sorts of threats to our environment, to animal life, that often doesn't make the headlines. And so we have to be vigilant. We had on the appropriations committee responding to the president's budget, where we saw devastating cuts in funding to all of these areas, and put money back in. And we are going to, when we get back in September, working out that budget, coming to a agreement in the Senate, is going to be our top priority. And we have to be able to respond and keep track. This administration moves quickly, and they are tearing at the threads of so many protections, but it often doesn't make the news. It's done at a regulatory level, it's done at an administrative level, but the effects can be devastating and they're cumulative. So we do have to work together to make sure that we are crafting a legislative response, and that when we are doing our budgets, we are watching these line items, and make sure that these agencies continue to have the enforcement tools that they need, and that we continue on a dialogue with the public on how to push back and preserve and protect these enforcement abilities. So thank you for raising it, it is not going unnoticed, we will not go quietly and let the administration roll back these protections. I don't really want to break.
The Endangered Species Act is like the Constitution of protecting species. And if climate change continues at the pace at which it is, then we're looking at 2100, we could be looking at five hundred thousand to a million species that are endangered, just because of the changes in their habitat. And I am the lead Democrat in the Senate, I'm protecting the Arctic National Wildlife Refuge, and I have been for years. They just want to put like a gas station on top of this incredible preserve, rather than increasing the efficiency of renewables, which we drive there, we would not do that way at all. So thank you for raising it, and again, it's just one more reason why Donald Trump has to be under a one-term position.
Good evening, I'm Erica Ball from Maynard. Thank you both for being here, it's a distinct honor and pleasure. A procedural question. I know that the House under the leadership of our Speaker Nancy Pelosi has been working hard and creatively on passing a lot of legislation on climate change, on gun issues, on criminal justice. And my question is this, these bills have passed the House, they have not even been introduced in the Senate. If we don't change the complexion of the Senate in 2020, what happens to the bills that were passed in this Congress in the House, whatever got to the floor in the Senate?
You have raised the Central 18th Amendment to help the Democrats in 2020. So because of Catherine's great work, and the other leaders in the House, they have sent over legislation that would require background checks. For anyone personally, again, Mr. McConnell said dead on arrival. They sent over legislation on net neutrality. Other leader on net neutrality in the Senate, Mr. McConnell said dead on arrival. So we're going to take about a half a dozen of these issues, which all polled at seventy-five percent or higher, we're going to turn it into Mitch McConnell's legislative graveyard. And we're running, a political graveyard for Republicans running for the Senate and the House next year. And in 2020, we will have the ability to be able to pass legislation if the American people want to have one of those.
It's a two-word answer, ditch Mitch.
Just one last word. My game plan, and we are very fortunate in Massachusetts, that our political back is protected, and we know we have great representation. My game plan is to zero in on Mitch McConnell's opponent. I think we have a great Democrat running there, and she will get a lot of attention from me. And I encourage our friends here to do the same, zero in on him, send her some money, make sure she has the wherewithal to come back, Mitch McConnell.
As the Democratic presidential candidates win them down, and there are fewer and fewer of them, I think we might find some of them are incredibly great candidates for the United States, in the United States.
My name is Ken Brown, I live in Marlboro. My company, St. Hydrogen, is headquartered in Lexington, basically, two districts. The resolution talks about going to a hundred percent renewable generation electricity, and which is so important for the electrification of vehicles, and also for newly electrified buildings, because we don't want to power vehicles and buildings with fossil fuel-generated power. But being in the storage business, I know that renewables alone cannot be the path to fully one-hundred percent no carbon. And have you thought about doing something on storage?
Oh, I believe that storage is going to be revolutionary. And that a high percentage of the young people here in Framingham, who are thinking about their sophomore or junior science projects, are trying to figure out what the little twist is that's going to occur in storage, so they can become revolutionaries to save the planet, and also become the wealthiest people who ever lived on this beautiful planet. And it's happening in every school across the country. It's happening at MIT, it's happening at Berkeley, it's happening everywhere. And billions of dollars are being put into this technology. And in the same way that there's a Moore's Law of solar, I'll just give you a couple of numbers, there were two thousand total megawatts of solar in 2008, 2009. As of the end of last year, sixty-five thousand megawatts of solar. Why? Because we put the tax breaks on the books. Why? Because states ask.